Seven o'clock, I would like to call to order the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, the village of Bartlett, counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane. Please call the roll.
George Cozio.
Here.
Joe Vano.
Here.
Bob Picaro.
Here.
Guy Papa.
Here.
Michelle Suarez.
Here.
Charlie Devoe.
Here.
And Mike, I'm here.
And Mike Weirden.
Here.
We have before you the minutes from the February 25th meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, seconded.
Moved by Bob, seconded by George. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
George Cozio.
Yes.
Joe Vano.
Yes.
Bob Picaro.
Yes.
Guy Papa.
Yes.
Michelle Suarez.
Yes.
Charlie Devoe.
Yes.
Mike Weirden.
Yes. I'm sorry, that was the approval of the January 2nd minutes. The item on the agenda tonight is case number 20-05, 102 Oakwood Lane. Are the petitioners present? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Please stand and raise your right hand.
Can you come over to the...
By the microphone perhaps? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record and address.
Evan Bergopolis.
And address.
This is 4102 Oakwood Lane.
Okay. Do we have the evidence of the mailings, the newspaper article, and the picture of the sign?
Yes, we do.
Mark those exhibits A, B, and C. Go ahead and present your case.
This is for 102 Oakwood Lane, which is the corner lot off of Bartlett and Oakwood. This lot previously had a swimming pool, parking lot, and a structure on it, which has been demoed a few years back. And on this particular lot, it's an 80-foot wide lot, and with the setbacks off of both Bartlett and Oakwood of 35 feet, that allows, you know, a buildable area that was only about 40 feet for the house. The houses next door, they're 65-foot wide lots, and they're, because of the setbacks on the sides, they're not as large. The houses were wider. So when we're talking with the owner on a building on this lot, we're looking to keep the structure inside the existing setback, but we're looking to have a variance off of the Bartlett Road setback of 35 feet, of eight feet, so they can fit a porch, a covered porch, that would extend into that. The previous structure extended into the setbacks by about 11 feet on the one side and about 17, 18 feet on the Bartlett or the Oakwood side. Part of what we'd be doing with this building would be taking down the retaining walls and leveling out the dirt and then restricting access off of Bartlett by closing up the curb cut, then having access off of Oakwood Lane. So they're looking, the house would be the same, it'd be actually a little bit smaller still than the houses next door, but with the porch would allow, it'd be more uniform to the houses that were, you know, next door. Access would be off, again, off of Oakwood, driveway off of there. You know, with this lot, there's a lot of grade change from the front to the back, so it's a little bit of a tricky site to try to get a driveway to fit. And we went back and forth between the county and a public works engineer about where we can get this driveway. And so right now, we'd be looking to be the northeast side of the lot, and that would help, that would need that, we'd have to take down the retaining wall, because right now, it's kind of artificially up. If you're familiar with the area, it's just about three or four feet tall, and it's in, you know, decaying condition of timber, a timber retaining wall, so it's not something that's needed anymore, so we can take that down and prove site visibility and make the lot grade better.
You have a very unusual situation at best. It would be very impractical to try to come out onto South Bartlett Road.
The county, because we have access to Oakwood, the lot, they, in my conversations with them, they won't allow access to Bartlett Road.
Bartlett Road.
Because we do have access to Oakwood.
Okay. Any, have you received any calls or anything from anybody in the village?
I received two phone calls from people who saw the sign, and their only concern was that the retaining walls be removed.
Oh.
So once I told them that was what the issue, what was being discussed at the meeting, they didn't have any additional questions or concerns about the building itself.
Originally, there was a farmhouse there, was converted to the country club when Tech Town built the property in the early 70s, and it was kind of hard to fit everything in with the street, that's why they had to put the retaining wall in. Any questions from anyone on the board?
Not a question, but a comment. I think this is a good improvement to the property, and I have to add that I'm always a big fan of a porch, especially a wraparound, so I like this idea.
One of the things too, because we have a narrow width along Oakwood, you know, fitting a front door, when you're fitting a two-car garage, it's tough to fit it on there, so the front door faces, you know, Bartlett, and to, you know, give that Bartlett roadside more of a front-of-the-house look, you know, the porch helps accomplish that by having that wraparound. In fact, have the door face Bartlett, but the garage door, address, everything faces Oakwood.
So there's going to be, between this site and the other two houses that are there...
There's one, there's one lot.
There's going to be a lot, an open lot still? Or is that whole thing a lot?
No, there's a 65-foot lot in between.
In between, okay.
This is a question to staff. What is or might become of Lot 23?
It could be built as a single-family home.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, at this point, we shall open it up to the public. If you have something to say, please make sure that you fill out one of the forms, and then we don't have to worry you.
James Lumber.
James Lumber, 807 Redwood Lane. This property is on a hill, and I'm wondering if the property is going to be leveled off, because coming from South Bartlett Road east goes down onto an angle, and you can't see the traffic coming over the hill on South Bartlett Road. Right now, the existing driveway is on South Bartlett, and the retaining wall that's around there is almost five feet high if you're standing on a sidewalk, and a sidewalk is another three feet higher than the street elevation, so we're talking eight feet. So what needs to be done is for the land in this property to be lowered to have a better visibility of the traffic coming over that hill.
It is very...
Right now, like I said, there's that barrier wall holding up that five feet of dirt, plus trees and bushes and things like that, and now if you're going to start putting a house on there, people trying to exit that are going to have a very difficult time looking for the traffic coming over that hill. So that needs to be removed. It's a railroad tie barrier.
Right, the petitioner is removing, he's regrading the entire site, so the whole...
Is he going to grade it down to street level or sidewalk level?
He's grading it down, so let me see if I can do my bearings on here. If you look at, let's see, the street curb is about 802, and that's going to be the same grade pretty much as the front of the house. So the house is pretty much, this right here is 802, this line, that is going to be level with the curb, the top of the curb. The entire site's going to be regraded, it's all being brought out.
So where you just had that red dot, right there on the corner?
Yes.
That's going to be leveled to the street or to the sidewalk?
This will be level, they're leveling all the way to, they'll be level with the sidewalk. From what it looks like, they don't have any grading marks directly on the sidewalk.
So the sidewalk is not going to be replaced and lowered, you don't think?
No, they're basically starting at the sidewalk, and then this is, the lowest point of the lot is in the front, where it'll be about 802. It looks like the highest point anywhere on here is going to be 806, way at the back. The entire lot's being regraded and flattened out. You're not going to have the visibility problems that you do now.
So then the sidewalk on Oakwood is going to be lowered down to street level?
Uh...
Because that's three feet above street level right now.
Evan, can you clarify if you're doing anything to...
The area that the street is...
Right here is being redone.
That's the steepest part, so that'd be the area that we lower down to meet up with the driveway, so it comes down about a couple feet, so I think it is between the parkway and the new sidewalk, about 10 feet, so it's just about a foot or higher than that point. So by the time we get to the sidewalk, just along part of the road, it's basically even almost with the sidewalk, with the road, so that doesn't need to be lowered since it's the same elevation, so the 802, you know, all those contours that are going to the south, or the south, it's all even, so the whole curb, sidewalk, lot, all flows together, and then we get to Oakwood, there's a section of sidewalk that's going to be lowered so that the driveway can be at a setable slope. So that area there, it's all the, none of the, it's all the grade that comes down, so from the retaining wall to the grade behind it, that'll get smoothed out, and then over by Oakwood, the sidewalk gets lowered so that it fits with the driveway and curb.
I walked it the other day also, and yesterday, I understand what the gentleman is saying, but if he's going to lower it the way it's said and grade it down to the sidewalk, when you come out of Oakwood, you're on the north side of that double entry, and if it's lowered down, I think it'll be very safe as those people, because that, right now, it is kind of weird with the retaining wall, but I think if it's lowered down, as the gentleman's saying, I don't think there'll be an issue with people coming in and out of Oakwood.
And, well, the resident is going to have to go east to make a U-turn to get out, right? Because of the island in there.
Yes.
Okay. Is that answering your question, Jim?
That's the main problem with that property, is because when that farmhouse was there, built 80 years ago, you know, nobody cared about the traffic coming over that hill, but right now, it's pretty busy, especially with the 18-wheelers now traveling on that road.
Yes, and they go flying over the hill.
You know, and they don't follow the speed limit, and the police aren't out there to give them tickets anymore, so if that property is down lower, we can see what's coming over that hill a whole lot easier, you know, especially the person that's going to make a right-hand turn or coming out of there, they can start to look in that direction and see what's coming, otherwise...
Even with the vacant lot, it's a challenge right now, right?
So...
Yeah, I agree.
That was the main problem, and the driveway is going to be off on Oakwood, which eliminates some of that problem for that driveway that's existing there on South Bartlett Road. So, yeah, the property needs to be lowered down. Thank you.
You're going to have quite a bit of dirt hauled out of there.
There's stairs depicted, so those are existing stairs that will go away?
As this property exists, if you're leaving Oakwood and making a left turn, right turn, sightlines are difficult at best today, as it exists, and it has been that way for many years, and with the reduction to a sidewalk-level height of this property, that'll be, I think, a great improvement in the safety that's, that'll be available on the corner. Sightline will be tremendously improved. And I have to believe that a combination of the village through inspections and what the developer is promising, that this will be reduced, the height of the property there will be reduced and be ultimately a good thing.
That's a very valid point, I would agree with that. Anyone else have anything to say?
Neil Power.
Neil Power, 106 Oakwood Lane. I don't have any issue with the variance or, you know, what they've put up here. My issue is more so is with the builder. We bought a lot with him, two parcels over here at 106, and it was supposed to be a five-month build, it ended up being two years. He's a chronic liar. We had several issues, you know, I wish Brian, some of the, you know, Kevin, Kevin Walsh, some of those guys were here, because they had to deal with him too, and his attorney, and he doesn't answer phone calls, he doesn't return calls, stop work order permits on our house. There was never anybody there to oversee the work. There were people drinking beer in our house when it was being built. It was, I mean, we went, you know, I called the Better Business Bureau, Attorney General's Office, you know, there was an article I had submitted to the examiner, and, you know, nothing fazed him, he just, he just, there were weeks, months at a time where no work was being done at the house. You know, we were renting a townhouse a couple miles down in Hanover Park, Bartlett, and I would drive by every night, and no work, no work. Call him, email him, text him, no response. And, you know, he's got a million excuses. You know, the house next to us was supposed to start, I think, in April the following year, and it, I don't think it started for about six months after that. So, you know, I know they had threatened to, at least they told me that they were going to threaten to not let him build in the village anymore, but obviously, that's not the case if he's, you know, here today, I guess, to do that, but, you know, I just, you know, and if this, I don't know if this gentleman here is the new owner of the lot, but just to give you a warning, I mean, I've got reviews online about him, it was just a complete nightmare, and we moved in, you know, at some point, your construction loan ends, 12 months, I think it was. So for the next year that we were waiting to move in, we were paying full mortgage on the house and rent, you know. At the beginning, you're paying, I think, it's interest only, so that was 12 months. After that, we're paying basically a double mortgage for a year. Yeah, I mean, I can't say enough about how awful it was to build with him. I just, and, you know, I think if you talk to Brian, is it Goralski, or, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it.
Goralski.
You know, I'd ask you to ask him his recollection. He dealt with him on many occasions and would tell me he's not responding to him as well. So, you know, I hope, you know, I obviously want houses built on these, you know, vacant lots, but at least a warning to the potential homeowner that what you're getting into, because it's...
It sounds as though you had a unique unfortunate experience perhaps, but, I mean, at this point, even if there's a delay of building after they leveled the lot, everybody's going to be benefiting from having that corner improved with the site.
Right, we would all benefit. I don't know if the homeowner who was promised a six-month build would benefit paying a year and a half, you know, or double mortgage for a year like we were, and, you know, just never knowing when your house is going to be complete. We moved in, our house wasn't even complete, there was never a final walkthrough, there was never a punch list. You know, I never met him to get the keys. He had one of his henchmen show up, and we had to, you know, my wife was nine months pregnant, we moved in three days after my son was born, and he didn't give a crap about that, I mean. We get his father involved to have any, to get him to even respond to us at one point.
Well, I think this is something that perhaps the village will be on top of it and try to have a better outcome than what you had.
At least two for two, and taken that long, and, well, he didn't take quite as long on my neighbor's home, but it was substantially longer than it was supposed to, so...
Okay. But you don't have any objection to the variance itself?
I don't have any objection to the variance itself, no.
All right, thank you, sir.
Question to the builder, what's your guesstimate on timeframe, on when this property would be completed and turned over to a buyer?
Normally speaking, when a house of this size with everything is selected at the time, everything is paid for at time, these bills are typically about six months. So if the stuff is not picked up or picked out, or there's issues with payments, or there's other issues, and we had some, there were some issues along this road where we had to replace the services, existing services, and so that was delayed, and some properties were just replaced. This lot last summer, a big plan to have, so all those items are taken care of, and swarms of workers in the backyard that are already installed, sanitary swabs, and stuff, and so everything's had ready to build, so that's typically what, what everything goes for.
Thank you. The issue here at hand tonight really is the variance on the setback for the front porch.
Are there any more, Kristy?
Those were the only two that turned in. If you can fill out one of the witness forms, as long as you fill it out afterwards, so that we can have your name for the record. Yes.
You can fill it out after you speak, that's okay. Just come up to the microphone, please.
Yes, if you can come up, you can pull it out when you're done speaking.
Hello, thank you for having this meeting tonight. My name's Joanne Ronn. I live at 103 Oakwood, right across the street from the said property here. Just a couple comments I wanted to make about, I'm a longtime resident on that street, of the time that the other two houses were being built. As a resident that lived on that street, it was difficult, because before construction started, and even after some of the original, the raising of the old property, the maintenance of the lot while they were waiting to find buyers, then when they finally found buyers, I mean, it was years and years of being next to a construction zone where houses were constantly getting, you know, washed with loose dirt spray and forget about trying to...
Could you move the microphone a little closer to yourself?
Um, I...
That's good, yeah. Thank you.
It's really just the long stretched-out time that it took from, and the pool itself, before that was removed, sat filled with water after the property was sold to the current owner, and it was like a cesspool for season after season. I was, you know, we had to contact the village to ask them to do something about it. Every once in a while, they would send out somebody to put something in that cavity for mosquito control, but the neighborhood was inundated with bugs, mosquitoes. It was a really long process to get to where it is today, so thinking of a new project starting and hoping that the village will, in fact, keep their promise and really keep a pulse on this new project, because I feel like the neighborhood didn't feel like that happened in the past. I do have a couple questions. Through the years on Oakwood, because of the topography that everybody also talked about, with the old building being so high and the roadway, the road was regraded many years ago, and there were some new, I don't know, underground culverts or something to redirect some of the water, but when we have some significant storms, we have some significant rain flow down Oakwood into the surrounding neighborhood, so I'm just kind of curious about the regrading of that property. The properties adjacent to it on Bartlett Road are, will be much higher maybe after this regrading, I don't know, but I'm hoping that the report for the regrading and the water flow from storm, natural flow, has been addressed. I'm also wondering for the setback, which, what this is about for that porch, is that on the side, so it will be closer to Oakwood, is that right?
No, this is so it's closer to South Bartlett Road.
So it'll be closer to South Bartlett?
Correct, so the 35-foot building line is in red here and here.
So the porch will be...
The opposite behind it, the porch kind of bumps out.
Closer to Bartlett Road, okay.
So that, if you remember, the old clubhouse was located approximately here.
Okay, so the clubhouse was even further out...
Yes.
...what you're proposing here. Okay, all right. So I guess for me, the two issues as the resident right here is, A, the village holding all the benchmarks for the different building phases, holding accountability, I'm hoping that happens, and then also that the report for the grading is done appropriately so that the neighborhood doesn't end up with any water issues with drainage from storm. That's, those would be my two concerns that I'd like to...
The village engineer looks at grading plans prior, that they'll have to submit as...
Okay.
...building permit process, and they'll make sure everything's flowing correctly.
Okay, well, thank you. You want me to leave this up here?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Anyone else?
Hi, Jason Hebert. I live at 108 Oakwood. I've also built my house as well. My question is, the sidewalk on Bartlett Road next to the retaining wall is a complete disaster, so when we walk our two daughters to the library, or Neil, or the village walks their kids to the library, to the pool, it's a disaster. I mean, there's glass all in it, it's just, it's unfortunate, the amount of taxes that we pay that, you know, my kids shouldn't have to walk on that and things like that nature. Are we going to, once they remove that retaining wall, also repair that sidewalk?
Evan, have you talked to Public Works about, has Public Works...
We had just discussed about Oakwood, you know, there was, you know, the Bartlett Road, that's actually, that's in...
That's the county, yeah.
...jurisdiction, so the retaining wall, we have to get approval from the county to take this down.
Because I can only imagine, once you take that retaining wall down, that you're going to have concrete popping up and all sorts of things, I mean, it's only going to make it worse.
Right now, again, our discussion is going to...
You know?
...Public Works, and they're directing us wherever, the old one, because of the height difference, the county side, you know, since the village doesn't have, that's the county jurisdiction, so we have to go from that and get the permit for lowering it, but the only discussion they've had to this point is just the closing off of the curb, curb cut that's on Bartlett.
So the village has no control over that at all?
It's not our jurisdiction, so that's the county, it's their right of way, so, but it's something that they would look at at the time that plans are submitted. They do get a copy of the plans.
That's it, thank you.
So am I hearing that for that sidewalk to be replaced, it would have to be the county that would have to approve it and fund it?
I'm not saying the county would have to fund it, but the county would have to be the one to say, yes, it needs to be replaced.
Okay, so if the county approves it, that the sidewalk could be replaced, then the builder could provide the new sidewalk or...
That's something he'd have to work out with the county.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Just to, from what I read, there is already a... Just to, from what I read, there is already a buyer for this plot, is that correct?
They've already purchased it.
They've already purchased it. So essentially, there's a home that's set up, once you get approval, to be built, which we got to show the plans for. Okay, thank you.
Come up to the microphone, please.
One oh four, the one that's not being built on, is there any plans in the near future to build on that one? And if not, can me and my neighbors have something better to look at besides a mound of dirt and weeds that are growing in it? So in the, in the future, is there, I guess my biggest problem with the village, and again, this has nothing to do with you guys, I had to pay over four grand to sod my lot in the backyard, but the village lets a mound of dirt and weeds grow up in the lot that, that might, me and my neighbors have to look at, and I just don't think that's fair at all.
I can send our health officer out tomorrow to look at it. He's the one that does the tall grass and weeds ordinance, so I can send him out there tomorrow.
There's no weeds, not now, it's winter, obviously.
Well, but I can have him go out there, he can add it to his list of one of the vacant lots that he needs to check on, and he goes out there during growing season, every, like, every week, to see how things are going, especially when it's rainy. We do know that things like that can get out of control.
Okay.
So I can add that to his list of properties to watch.
Thank you.
Valid concern, thank you.
Question to staff. If this variance is approved tonight, where does this project move to next?
It would either go to Village Board Committee, probably on March, we just got a notice that it got moved from March seventeenth to March twenty-fourth.
So then everything is ready as far as the building department goes?
He has not submitted building permit plans, so we make them go through this process first to make sure, before they have full architectural drawings made and have all the engineering done for the lot. We don't want them to spend their time and money having that done if it's ultimately gonna get denied. So once we get a positive recommendation and get the vote from the board, then he can submit building permit plans.
Okay. Anyone else? Any further discussion or motions by the board?
I would make a motion to pass along an approval to the village board, let me get the right number here, to approve item twenty oh five, one oh two Oakwood Lane.
At this point, we have a motion on the floor, I shall close the public hearing. Any second?
Second.
Second, and by Joe Bano. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Guy Papa?
Hi.
Michelle Suarez?
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe?
Yes.
George Coziel?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Mike Wearden?
Yes.
Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the board. Stay in touch with Kristy to find out for sure that it does appear that it'll be on the twenty-fourth agenda, right?
Correct.
Okay. What do we have here? Any old business, new business?
I know you guys enjoyed a couple months off. Don't expect that to happen for a while. We have a seven eleven that will be before you next month that's looking at going into the old Marathon Station at Lake and North Bartlett Road.
Oh.
So that building, they're proposing to tear down and build a new convenience store and gas station. And then we have another, probably a text amendment for a gas station at the south, southeast corner of Route twenty-five and West Bartlett Road. So, and then we have a couple other projects that are in the works as well. So expect to be coming to meetings.
All right.
I have a general question to the rest of the ZBA members. I've come across a, I think, an interesting website that has a lot of insight on to, as to why villages and towns do things such as reduced parking, where they use public parking for the, like a restaurant, not, so a restaurant doesn't have to have an absolute minimum number of parking spaces. And there are articles that I have come across like that. They might be related to the ZBA, they might be related to the Plan Commission, they just might be general, interesting articles. Do, does anyone have an objection if I start occasionally emailing you one of these links?
That would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act?
Is it?
To be, it could be. So it's better if you send stuff to us, and then we can distribute things accordingly.
Okay. But, I mean, just in general, I mean, what's the, the interest level, other, other members? Okay, I'd be more than happy to send a link, and then if you guys think it's worthwhile, pass along.
Good, as long as we don't have you violating the law, George, and handcuffed and resigned.
If, 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 if I send, if I send one to staff, then it's staff's problem.
Yeah. Long-term member bites the dust over violation of Open Meetings Act. Anything else? Any motions to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I think it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Charlie and Michelle were the ones that moved.